Okay, we're all set.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
We have an hour set aside, so we should go ahead and get started, because I'm sure a lot of people have questions. But before we do, I would like to give Senator Hartley an opportunity to say a couple of words, or just say good morning. Hi, Senator.
I'm good. Let's go.
Okay, we got you down as Rep. Hartley.
Oh, well, that's okay. I answer to anything, Bobby. And I pour the coffee, too.
And I have to say this to also Senator, the other day I had something come up here at work. Thank you for chairing that meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we do.
Thank you so much. And also like to say good morning to Senator Gordon and Rep. DiCaprio.
And good morning to you, too.
Good morning. So let's get started. Good morning. Commissioner, you want to get started? And thank you for seeing us today and bringing your team. If you want to just get started your presentation, or if you want to introduce your team, it's up to you.
Sure. Good morning. Good morning, Senator Austin, Senator Gibson, and Senator Hartley, and distinguished members of the Appropriations Subcommittee on Conservation and Development. Thank you for having us today. And first of all, I wanted to introduce a new member of my team, Deputy Commissioner Brandon McGee.
Morning, all. It's good to see you, Representative Gibson and Baker and others and Paris and Senator Hartley. I can just go on, but pleasure to be here.
And then I also have with me Michael Santoro, Director of Housing Research and everything else that I need. And Steve Delila is also with me today. We have questions. We received the questions and we submitted the responses. So just open to any questions you may have from the responses that we submitted. And also, I do want to make sure that you know that I do need to leave at 10:30. Congresswoman DeLauro have asked me to be on a press conference in New Haven. So but my staff is full aware and they can answer any questions you may have in addition to the ones that we can answer. So ready to entertain any questions you may have.
Members, are there any questions? I don't see any hands raised at this point in time.
Commissioner, so who do you love? Us or Rosa?
I had to call Brandon. You said, I don't want to make... Rosa has some money that can bring to our work. I really...
Well, we love you. We love you both equally, which is why we're here and then we'll be there later.
Tell her we said hi.
I will, I will.
Hey, Rep. Gibson, maybe they could walk through the responses that they sent to us so that if there are questions and, you know, what has been reported back, we could get further clarification.
Senator Hartley, that's a great idea. Commissioner, is that possible?
Yes, Michael, do you have the list on the questions in front of you? Could you go on?
I have the questions up and the responses. I can certainly go through them. I will reiterate the question and then provide a response. And if you have subsequent follow-up.
Mike?
Yes, Susan?
For you, I've enabled screen sharing, so feel free to... Feel free to share your documents, because I've enabled screen sharing. It's a deep airboard.
Okay, I couldn't hear that. There's a little garbled for me. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Mike, you can screen share.
Screen sharing?
Oh, screen share, absolutely. And blow it up, go to single-page view. Somebody give me a thumbs up. You can see it. Great, thank you, Commissioner. Okay, is that big enough?
Yes.
Okay, Senator Hartley, you're muted.
Yeah, no, I was just saying, can you make it just, yeah, a tad bigger? That's good.
Absolutely. Okay, so again, I'll run through the questions and our responses. How many staff filled positions or funded from the General Fund? Is staff members' time is charged from multiple sources? What are the full-time equivalents FTEs filled positions supported by the General Fund currently? Currently, there are thirteen and a half FTEs filled, 7.45 FTEs pending hiring in the current fiscal year. That was when this was actually prepared. We've actually got a couple others on board already. And with a total of 20.95 positions supported by the General Fund. And then are there general fund vacancies in the process of being filled? The answer is yes. I believe we provided an attachment that spells out those, but we can talk about them if anybody wants specifically to know what those pending positions are. Currently, how many currently employed staff are funded from federal sources? How many are full-time, part-time, and durational? There are 40.5 filled FTEs that are supported by our federal sources. And of these, 10 FTEs are durational. There are no part-time employees currently. Can you list the major federal programs DOH administers and approximately how many staff FTEs support each of them? Certainly. In ITT, which is the one that I think most everybody knows about, that's the ERA one and ERA two money. We have nine durational FTEs servicing that program. CDBGDR, CDBG Disaster Recovery, this is the Hurricane Sandy money. We still have one durational FTE funded under that activity. Section eight Housing Choice Voucher Program, there are 2.55 permanent FTEs. Understand that's actually spread out, I think, over eight to 10 staff. But when you, again, look at the full-time equivalents, it's 2.55. CDBG Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, the Small Cities Program, 5.15 permanent FTEs. And the Home International Housing Trust one, which are two, which are our two largest affordable housing production programs. There are 11.1 permanent FTEs for that program. Those staff service our bond dollars in terms of our housing activity as well. And I see a question.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair and Mr. Santoro. The durational FTEs, how long are those positions? Are those two-year positions?
Well, technically, they are two-year positions, but they actually then get extended as long as we have the money. So the Sandy position, as an example, we've had at the department now since Superstorm Sandy, so 10 years.
Okay.
Yeah, but the normal for a durational position at the start is a two-year duration, again, subject to funding availability.
It's basically to run the program. I would keep them until the money is done.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before I move on?
Yes, this is rep. I just wanted to ask really quick. You said if we wanted to request, I would like to know, I think you said there's 17 vacant positions currently. Is that correct?
There are seven FTEs pending hiring in the current fiscal year. Seven.
Seven pending hire?
Yes.
And then how many vacancies do you have?
Oh, so, well, on the general fund side, we have technically 24 authorized FTEs. When these are all full, that would leave us 3.05. So as of this moment, it would be 10.75 vacant FTEs. Again, 7.45 of those we expect to fill by June 30.
And then out of those, are they funded in the budget?
Well, all of our positions generally are joint-funded. That is, we leverage our federal resources to support our general fund. So we anticipate being able to fill all of those positions with the governor's budget. Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are any positions supported by state bond funds or any other non-appropriated state funding? The answer is yes. Three FTEs are supported by either state bond dollars or non-appropriated funding. Please provide a list of the cold weather shelters for this year. We provided that list. I can put it up on the screen if you need me to.
Senator Austin has a question.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. So I'm looking at the list that you provided to us, and that's the list that says statewide warming central list. Is that it?
Yes.
So I see there are very few in eastern Connecticut. What do you do for funding in these warming centers?
So Steve?
Right. Sure. So when we had this funds appropriated to us last year, we appreciate, we immediately went to each of the local seven coordinated access networks and asked them to tell us what they needed. And when they came back, their needs were right around the $5 million mark. So we were able to fully fund what they requested. So in response to eastern in particular, we gave them everything they asked for.
So because eastern Connecticut generally is a third of the geographic area of the state, slightly more than a third of the geographic area. And when we were looking at this, first, the president and Walker and I were maybe not as clear, but we didn't intend for the money to go just to the cold weather shelters. We were trying to fund shelters broadly. So can you send a list of shelters that are not just the cold weather shelters, that are also shelters?
Yeah, we can certainly send you a list of all DOH-minded shelters. But I just want to reiterate, when this funding was given to us, we had this conversation with all of our home service providers, and they directed us that they believed that their biggest need was for cold weather filter. That's what we took the information from them.
I understand that. I'm just saying that a lot of the shelters called us after they had seen this funding and were surprised they got none. That's all. So if you could send us the list of shelters that are there 12 months up to you, that would be great. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. And Michael, did you say you already sent that list to us?
We did. It was part of our submission.
Not the all shelters?
No, the shelter. We'll send the shelters one. It was for the warming centers for the winter weather conditions. But we will send you the shelter list.
Which is in the email that Susan Keen sent us. And that's what I was looking for. I'm looking for all shelters. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, Michael, I don't see any other hands up, so I guess you can continue.
Thank you, Chairman. Question five, can you provide information on the number of people assisted per year through diversion? What is the average dollar amount of assistance per household that benefits? And how is the program administered? So during calendar year 2022, 7,141 households were diverted. In 2021, 7,917. In 2020, 7461. And at the start of the Lamont administration in 2019, 6,136 households were diverted. Currently, there is no standard amount of funding for diversion. The CANs or Coordinated Access Networks often leverage philanthropic or other resources for this flexible resource. In addition, many diversions may only require mediation and not financial assistance. Since many of these resources are not visible to DOH, we unfortunately do not have a reliable estimate on the average cost per diversion with financial assistance. The program is currently administered by the CAN, Coordinated Access Network. And when a household has an appointment with the CAN to analyze the housing crisis, the CAN intake worker engages in an interview to determine if the household can be diverted. At this time, the intake worker will attempt a wide variety of activities, including mediation and financial assistance to prevent the household from entering shelter. If you have questions on, any additional questions, I would defer to Mr. Delo. Seeing none, we'll move on.
Yes, thank you, Michael. I don't see any questions.
Question six, given recent reporting that people with tenant-based rental assistance, either the Section eight Housing Choice Voucher Program or the State Rental Assistance Payments Program, are struggling to use their vouchers, what is the current situation on that? What are some policy, possible policy solutions that lawmakers could pursue to address the issue of low utilization rates among other housing authorities? The issue of voucher holders losing their vouchers for not being able to find a unit within 120 days is not an issue for anyone with a DOH Section eight or RAP certificate. When the pandemic struck, DOH immediately extended the amount of time a voucher holder or certificate holder could find a unit to at least one year. In fact, for those who were actively looking for a unit in March 2020, we allowed those households to continue searching for a unit until 12/31/22 or more than 21 months. Current voucher holders still have one year to find a unit. DOH contractor continues to work with the voucher holders that cannot find a unit in that timeframe. DOH is willing to extend search times to ensure that all of our voucher holders have the ability to find a unit. Unfortunately, DOH does not have jurisdiction over the administration of other housing authorities in the state that fall under the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. While HUD has been flexible and allows housing authorities to set their own rules, it is ultimately up to each individual housing authority to make the decision on what is in the best interest of their operation. Any follow-up on that?
I don't see any hands, Michael. I think we're okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Senator Hartley.
Yeah, didn't get my hand up in time. So do you do any kind of analysis which looks on a statewide basis of the utilization of vouchers? I mean, I know in my district, it is one of the most common, you know, issues that we get, that, you know, they have a voucher, but they can't find a place. I mean, because those would be the hotspots that obviously we need to get in and do some kind of intervention because people have them, they can't use them. And then the other issue is the long, long waiting lists. And that's probably HUD, not you, I'm assuming.
That, for the most part, that is correct, Senator.
Yeah. And is there anything, I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but is there anything that we can do about that with regard to, you know, the feds, the HUD side?
Well, the real solution is create more housing opportunities, more units. And we are making every effort to do that. It really comes down to being a housing stock, a housing availability issue. So the more units we can produce, and the more units will be available, and people will be able to find units much more quickly. Again, for the record, our current utilization rate is 96% under our Section eight Housing Choice Voucher Program. And I think you're all very aware, we make every effort to expend all of our rental assistance dollars at every opportunity. So really, yes.
Senator, great question. In addition to all of the other outreach efforts, we understand the importance of collaboration and leveraging existing relationships to help assist residents throughout the state of Connecticut with identifying affordable and quality housing. So we are very intentional about working cross-agencies to really support individuals looking for housing. But just to underscore, we've got to, we've got to create more units, and that is a part of our priority moving forward. Sorry about that.
And if I can just add to Senator, a question is that we are, I actually, I am going to be meeting with Conero. We have scheduled a meeting, which is the Association for all the Housing Authorities, that we want to share some of the things that we're doing, some of the rules that we could and they could make changes or amendments to their plan that they have for the vouchers. So we will want to share and also support any of the changes that they could do to make sure that they utilize all their vouchers in a reasonable time.
Yes, thank you. I think that's probably one of the top issues that every legislator is dealing with now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Senator Hartley. All right, I see two questions, two hands up. Senator Kushner, followed by Representative DiCaprio. Senator Kushner.
I just wanted to thank Senator Hartley for raising that issue, because I know I've raised it before. And it certainly is a big problem in Danbury. But I do want to also express my appreciation to the Commissioner and especially to Steve, who helped out with recently extending voucher. And thankfully, that allowed someone to get into housing. And she had been homeless for more than a year. And so it really makes a huge difference when we have your support. And I'm always amazed at how much you do as very... It's out to you. So I appreciate that. But I, you know, I think we need to understand as legislators, what can we do to create more housing units? Have and more affordable housing units. Clearly, Danbury, we saw an increase in rents this year. Somebody said it was 20% in the rent over the last year. And that's a problem as well, because even when people buy, sometimes, you know, the rents are so high, it really reduces the number of units that are available for people to look at. So that's another part of the problem. But thank you, Senator Hartley, for basing that. It's always on my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Kushner, for those remarks. All right, now, Representative DiCaprio, you have your hand up.
Just very, very quickly, the, I think you answered part of it with your 96% utilization rate. But my question was, you know, do the vouchers, do those cover the typical rents that we're seeing out in the market right now? That's a question, because I, one of the meetings I attended was that the vouchers, and may not be this voucher, this specific voucher, but the vouchers did not cover the rent. So anyway, if you could help me with that.
Sure. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, there are a couple of things that are out there. So as you can imagine, it takes HUD a little while to analyze markets to kind of set what their fair market rate is. And I think, as we've all seen during the pandemic, rents dramatically increased. So that kind of left HUD with their fair market rent a little bit behind. So what they did instead was allow each housing authority, if they so chose, to go up to 120% of that fair market rent. DOH quickly jumped on that. So we were able to keep up, keep up pace with that. But once again, kind of like the housing authority rules in terms of how long they let their individuals look for units, the same thing applies here. It's up to each individual housing authority to apply to HUD for that waiver to go to the 120%. Now HUD did release their new FMRs, which did increase to hopefully get up to a closer level as long as rents don't continue to drastically increase. And we actually adopted those a couple of months early, just to give our folks the opportunity to utilize the higher rents. And the same thing goes for the state RAP certificates as well. We obviously have more control over that, so we are easily able to look at the market a little bit quicker and adjust our payment standards in accordance to what was being seen on the ground.
Thank you for that. And just the last thing is, is there a set, is there a set amount for the, you know, what we're talking about? Or is that regionally specific?
It is regionally specific. So HUD sets up what are called the metropolitan statistical areas. So they kind of set up in each individual area, because clearly rents in lower Fairfield County are more expensive than the northeastern portion of the state. So HUD does adjust for that. And if you want, I'd be happy to send along what our current fair market rents are from HUD, as well as what we provide through the RAP program, just so you can have an understanding of the difference. And it's also based on unit size, so obviously a four-bedroom unit is going to, will have a higher value than a one-bedroom.
Okay, I would like that if you were able to send that.
That's simple, simple to do.
Thank you very much.
Those rents are actually available at the department's website for anybody to see, but we will make sure we get them sent over specifically to the committee.
Thank you for that question, Rep. DiCaprio. Rep. Porter, I see your hand up, but real quick, Commissioner Mascara-Bruna, just point of clarification. I know you said you have another meeting at 10:30. Is that just you or your whole team?
No, no, it's just, it's just me. The team will stay to answer any questions that you still may have.
Okay, great. Rep. Porter, if you don't mind, I'd like to give the Commissioner, is there anything you would like to say? Because it's 10:27, is there anything you would like to say as we depart? I'll give you that time to do that now.
Just all the information requested. If we are missing anything, please let us know. I really appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation and just get any feedback that we need in order for us to do our work. And I really appreciate all the support that I get from everyone. We have a lot of work to do. We are creating a lot more housing. But it's still, it's not fast enough to be able to respond to the demand. But as the government budget included more resources for the development of housing, which is one of our main goals these couple of years, is the production and be able to work with a lot of our partners. So thank you very much for all the support we get from you guys.
Thank you, Commissioner. I really appreciate you coming on. And we may have more questions after this working session, so we may see you again.
And by the way, I do love you guys and the Congresswoman, so everybody is very important in our life. I had to clown myself and be able to do postings, just to make sure that we are working with our partners.
Thank you so much. Just keep in mind, it's more of us than it is of her. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Okay, Rep. Porter, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, Representative Gibson, and thank you, Commissioner. And I'm glad to hear that we are working on, you know, housing. I just wanted to echo the sentiments that have already been expressed around affordable housing and the vouchers. I mean, I have folks that have vouchers, but can't use them because there's no housing available. And the thing I want to stress is really the affordable housing piece. And that we're looking at, you know, when we talk affordable, it's really affordable for the people that are already existing in the community when we look at average median income, not displacing people and pricing them out of a community and a neighborhood that they have, you know, basically grown up in. We have a situation going on right now in New Haven where we have tent city. We have a tremendous number of people actually living in tents with no housing available. So this is the pressing issue, and I just want to keep putting that on the front burner, how important it is that we actually take this seriously, because it is impacting us, not just around the housing issue, but the issue of children, you know, being exposed to elements and just not being able to get to school. It's so much instability when we look at the intersections and the things that are actually exacerbated, especially in pockets of poverty throughout the state and particularly in districts like mine. So I just wanted to put that out there, Representative Gibson, to make sure that we keep that centered, because I'm getting a lot of calls and a lot of conversations with my constituents who are facing evictions. We're talking about rent cap, rent stabilization, and all of these kind of things. So just wanted to keep that at the front burner. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Porter. You bring up some great issues. And I'm not sure if it's you, Michael, or who may want to touch upon that. But, you know, we, in my district, I see more and more housing developments coming up, but they're not affordable housing at all, very expensive. The regular, you know, family can't afford them, and they are being put out. So it's, I know it's very prevalent in the inner cities, but even in the suburbs, the suburbs, I'm Bloomfield. It's a great concern. So Rep. Porter, your words are very, very important.
Thank you, Representative Gibson.
You're welcome. Okay, I see, Michael, before you continue, I see Rep. Perez, good morning, Rep. Perez, has his hand up.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner.
Morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. If she's still here, if she's not, Deputy Commissioner, good to see you. You know, a big thing for me, just piggybacking off of what Rep Porter recently talked about, you know, housing is a big issue in my district. And what's really interesting is similar to what Rep Gibson said, you know, we're building all of these new buildings and, and projects. And, you know, you look at the prices of them, and it's $3,000 almost for a studio. And most of the people who have lived in my district or who have lived in Stanford have been there for 40 plus years, and many of them are now being placed out of the state. Not even in a, to a different city or town, but out of the state. And so the new trend that I'm seeing, and obviously I think this goes along with population, and this is just something that I would really like to see if we're tracking here in the state, and I'm sure that we are, is the population is going to continue to change over the next few decades. And are we looking at those metrics in terms of population for different ethnic and racial groups, different socioeconomic groups? Of kids, of what we're projecting for kids to be born in the next 10 years, let's say. Are we looking at those populations to then see from those metrics how we need to address housing and what new innovative ways we can actually implement? And if we are, I just, I would like to see the answer to that. If you could pass it on to the administrator to share that with the rest of the group, it'd be really helpful. Because I, I know that we're focused on what's going on right now, but I want to get ahead of the ball, as I'm sure my colleagues do, and focus on what we need to do over the next few years, so we don't end up back here. Thank you.
Thank you, Rep Perez.
If I can respond briefly, and thank you, Rep Perez, for opening the door. We are about to begin our next five-year planning process for our consolidated plan for housing and community development. That essentially lays out a guidebook for the next five years for the use of five of our federal community planning and development programs. One of which is, two of which, excuse me, are major production programs, the Home Investment Partnerships Program and the National Housing Trust Fund Program. In addition to a number of the human service type programs administered through Steve's group. I will be happy to add you to our distribution list for input through that planning process. We take a very detailed look at demographics, at trends, at housing stock as part of that planning process. So I'll be happy to share the materials with you as we go out through that process over the next 18 to 24 months. So look forward to your participation. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Representative. Okay, so, Michael, you want to continue?
I will do that. I'll share again.
Thank you.
Thumbs up, when you can see it. Thank you, sir. Deputy Commissioner, I appreciate that. All right, we're on question seven. For 2-on-1, how many housing-related staff are being supported? What are the operating hours for that service right now? What is the average wait time? What changes have been or will be implemented to address challenges? Well, the, the housing crisis line is currently open 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, seven days a week. Currently, 2-on-1 has 21 staff dedicated to the housing crisis line through June 30th of 2023. In July, it'll go back to seven if there's no additional investment. The average wait time in January was 27 minutes, while the longest delays are and have been over an hour. In consultation with 2-on-1, the CANS and DOH, it was determined to best utilize all staff during the busiest hours of housing crisis calls to try and limit wait times as much as possible. During the pandemic, housing crisis calls more than doubled, which added stress to the system. Other efforts to reduce the wait times have been to create the hubs or the physical locations where households can present and receive an intake appointment without accessing 2-on-1. This allows greater access to the system for those households that do not have access to a phone. In addition, the hubs took over the responsibility for any follow-up calls to 2-on-1, which makes up about 25% of the housing crisis calls. This should free up 2-on-1 housing crisis workers to assist first-time callers. One other thing not included in our response is this is not during the activation of a cold weather protocol. When the governor triggers the cold weather protocol, i.e. we have an extended period of extreme cold weather, that housing crisis line is open 24/7 during that period. It, it's actually in advance of, and I think a short time after that cold weather protocol ends. Anything you want to add, Steve? Nope, you got it. Right on. Thank you.
Michael, I see two questions, but if you guys don't mind, Senator Hartley and Rep Dylan and Senator Kushner, you just said a whole lot just now. Senator Kushner is shaking her head and smiling. You know what, Senator, I'm gonna let you go first, because you're probably going to ask the question that I'm thinking of right now. So Senator Kushner, the floor is yours.
Well, of course, you know, I've had conversations with the agency about the wait times on 2-on-1, and I know I was referred to the hubs. I think what would be helpful to know is if you have any data that you can share with us about what, what's happening at the hubs. How many people are they seeing? You know, what are the results from those visits? You know, I think that goes to the next level of what information we need to know. You know, we're hopeful that this will help resolve some of the problems we have with 2-on-1, but let's make sure that that's working before we give you our. Thank you, Representative Gibson. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Michael, did you want to respond to that before I go to Senator Hartley?
I'm gonna defer to Steve. Steve, any chance we can get hub in, hub data?
I, I think we can certainly look into it. Obviously, the hubs are pretty new. I was on a call yesterday that actually did show some data related to 2-on-1 calls and the hubs. Clearly, the number of calls still coming in is relatively high, but wait times have decreased a little bit. So I can certainly pull up that data for the last three months at least, at least give you a little picture of the 2-on-1 side of things. In terms of the hubs, we can try to pull data from our HMIS system that shows how many people are being served, so we can certainly look at that as well.
So we'll, we'll put together what we can, and we'll be happy to get it to the committee.
Yes, please do so. Thank you. Senator Hartley?
Thank you. Same thing. We just want to kind of do a dive into the hubs. How do, how do we advertise them? How do people know about the hubs? And where are they located? Are they in every community?
They're, they're not in every community. There's usually, it depends on the coordinated access network. They kind of just determine where the hub would be. So clearly, in your urban areas, you're going to have a hub, but you're not going to have a hub in your, you know, more rural or suburban communities. So for example, like Fairfield County, they have one hub in Bridgeport, New York, Stanford at Danbury. In New Haven, there's one in New Haven, one in Milford, same thing with other areas of the state. So we can certainly give you a list of where they're.
Do we have one in Waterbury? Do you know?
We should have one in Waterbury, yes.
How, how are they advertised? How do we?
So, so it's more, we still want the vast majority of entries to go through 2-on-1, so we're just trying to give the other access. Because what we don't want to have happen too, when you realize that the number of housing crisis calls has doubled. But we also don't want to have, it's the overburden in the hubs and have lines waiting outside the hubs as well. So we're trying to kind of make that delicate balance between going into 2-on-1 and having them set it up. Because 2-on-1 can also offer additional resources potentially. If someone's housing crisis may be resolved by something that's not within the homeless service system, maybe it's a utility payment, maybe it's, you know, connections employment or something along those lines. So we really want the hubs to really do a couple of things. One is to take off that 25% of calls which are callbacks. So that will greatly help at least get 2-on-1 be able to hopefully do some of their kinds of times, because they won't have to do the callbacks. The other pieces for those folks that don't have access to phones, you know, those who are unsheltered, living on the street, they can have a place to kind of come in and do that. So our homeless outreach workers will distribute that information. Clearly, anybody within the network, if they see anybody experiencing a crisis that can't get in touch with 2-on-1, they will help them get to those hubs.
And then you're going to also share with us the location of these hubs, right?
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Senator Hartley, for that question. Representative Dylan.
Sorry. Good morning. I'm sorry, I'm multitasking this morning. But thank you very much for your presentation. The tent city that was referenced earlier is generally in my district, and, and it's an area where the children from the poorer parts of, of the the hill part of my district usually play soccer and, and, and we spend a fair amount of time trying to get them out on a canoe. So the community doesn't want to be opposed to the homeless, but they're, to say they're deboted on this is an understatement. I was told by several constituents that 2-on-1 referred people who needed housing to that tent city. And, and they were very indignant and wanted me to go to the administration and so forth. We've all been very busy, so I haven't had a chance to verify any of those stories, but I simply wanted to direct your attention to that. There, there is a larger question which you sort of touched on earlier, and I won't go back to, which is certainly where I live. I'm worried about whether children can live in our city anymore. You know, we call things affordable housing when they're studios. And we're displacing families that lived there, and now we're, you know, we're taking over a field, you know, where kids used to play, and we're surrounded by wealthy accounts who have a lot of open space. So there are a lot of questions to unpack that are all potentially divisive. But the, the bottom line is I just hope it's really clear to your people that sending, sending, sending someone on a 2-on-1 call to a park, it wouldn't be standard protocol.
No, I, I find that, I, I would like to have more information on that. I would find that very, very hard to believe, because I don't even know if the workers at 2-on-1 would even have any visibility, because they cover the whole state of where a tent city would be. So that would be, I, I would love to get some information on that, so I can try to backtrack that to see, because we can, you know, if somebody called 2-on-1, they could give us the time, the phone number they called from, we can actually track that call back. So if you could find that, that would be very, very helpful to us. I've not heard of it.
To be honest, I had other, that wasn't my top priority. There's a lot of, of concern and division about how some of the issues we're facing. And, and that was something that was not what I was hearing two weeks ago, but I did hear it two or three weeks ago. And, and some of the people involved are very sympathetic to the general issue of the homeless, but, but feel, you know, they're kind of put upon. So I wanted to at least flag that people should not be doing that. I can, I have no evidence myself to make any claim or accusation about anybody on 2-on-1. I don't.
Okay.
I only have rather heated comments coming from a variety of people who live near that park. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, and, and a little bit of follow-up on that too, because we did see the article in the New Haven Independent related to a couple of tent cities around the city of New Haven. So we did follow up with our staff and our homeless outreach teams down in New Haven yesterday. And homeless outreach teams have been going out to these tent cities. And from my understanding, they have offered shelter to everybody who is in those tent cities. But unfortunately, not everybody is taking us up on that offer of shelter. So clearly, our, our homeless outreach teams are still trying to find the best ways to engage these individuals, to offer housing, as well as other opportunities besides staying out.
Yeah, I, I have a lot of reports again, and no direct evidence. I used to go there a lot. There's a picture of me with a little soccer team that I raised money for, because they had no money for equipment. And they can't play soccer there anymore, so that's a little bit of a heart tug for me. But they, I'd like to, maybe I'd like to track all this down, but I don't know. I was told that everyone there was offered other alternatives and that it was a matter of principle. I don't know. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to inflame anything. I really don't. I want to solve problems.
Agreed, agreed. We're, we're all about solving the problems as well. We're trying whatever we can do to assist. So if you continue, and we always encourage if you are seeing things on the ground, because obviously we're at a statewide level, and we can't, you know, have visual of every single location within the state. So if you are seeing anything in your districts, please just let us know, so that we can, you know, put what resources we do have and try to get a handle on what is going on.
Thank you, Rep Dylan, for that question. Another quick question for you guys. Are, are we working with other, are you working with other agencies like DSS or any other agencies to like solve some of these problems as far as these, if we have the units to house people, to get them out of these fields and into some, some housing situations?
Sure. So we clearly are really big believers at DOH of inter-agency partnership. We kind of understand the idea that stable housing will have the benefit of the other state agencies with the people they serve, whether it's mental health and addictions, or whether it's corrections, or whether it's employment, or whether it's, you know, DDS, whatever. We understand that their outcomes for their people will be better if the, if the, the ones that they are serving have permanent and stable and affordable housing. So we do have relationships with our other state agencies, in particular, as it relates to homeless outreach in terms of like some of these tent city questions that we have. We do have a strong relationship with our Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, who is able to get some federal funding directly related to homeless outreach for folks with mental health and substance abuse. So we do have regular coordination with Demus on some of these issues. We do coordinate with DSS, but that's more on the realm of getting our individuals' access to other entitlement benefits. Not as much as, you know, on the ground helping resolve the individual's homelessness there. So we try whatever we can to, to really do this, and we also really want to engage in some of our preventative measures as well. So for example, on the correction system, identifying people who are coming out of corrections, who do not have a place to go. So hopefully we can catch them before they end up out.
Okay, thank you. We have about 10 minutes remaining, 11 minutes. I'm gonna have you guys go ahead and continue.
All right. Thank you, Representative Gibson. Question eight, can you provide a trend analysis, the number of active vouchers for RAP and DOH administered federal rental assistance for the past four years? Again, on the chart is available as part of the response that we had sent to you. As you can see, we continue to trend upward. One point of clarification, so that everybody understands, under the Federal Housing Choice Voucher Program, HUD authorizes a certain number of vouchers and then gives us a certain amount of money. They don't always match. So as I indicated earlier, our utilization rate is about 96%. That means is we are using 96% of our money on the 8599 vouchers that are in use. Question, again, rather than read through the response, with regard to the RAP program, we are again trying to make every available use of the funds that are made available to us within the guidelines provided by the legislature. Question nine. What is DOH doing to ensure people in the intellectual developmental disability population have access to the housing they need? We've been actively engaged with DSS to create more units for supportive housing, specifically targeting the IDD population. DOH and DSS collaborated on the iDash initiative, which created housing for over 45 individuals with IDD in affordable housing settings. DOH and DSS, in addition, work to amend CHAP as Loan Management Credit Qualified Allocation Plan. DDS as an eligible population for supportive housing. That has led to two other projects being completed, serving an additional 29 people. And there are other projects in the LIHTC pipeline right now. We do have bond funds available for sufficient supportive housing, and we would certainly fund projects that have a supportive housing component specifically for the IDD population.
Michael, we have a question, if you don't mind. Rep, Dayton, good morning. How are you?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Michael, for your explanation here. I think one of the questions I had about the iDash initiative was how much money was left in that fund? And I don't see the answer there, so if you could please get that to us.
Sure, it was, it was part of another response on our bond fund balances. I can tell you, I can tell you it's about a million and a half in specifically targeted for iDash right now.
Okay, great. That's, that's super helpful. Thank you so much, and sorry I missed that other response. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Representative.
Right. So question 10, what is Right, um, so question ten, what is happening at this stage with United CT? Can you describe how much funding is transferred to the eviction prevention program? When that funding will be spent, how much other funding is part of that program, and details on how the eviction program works? So all cases for the original United CT program have been paid or closed. And by the end of this month, all appeals from the original program will have been reviewed and either the case will be reopened and processed, or it will be closed permanently. Um, eleven million dollars was transferred from ERA two to the eviction prevention fund used in conjunction with a million and a half dollars in state ARPA funding that the governor allocated for rent bank. Um, as the volume of applications under the eviction prevention fund continues to grow, additional funding from ERA two may be allocated as well. Uh, with the current applications, there's about three million that is committed to be spent as of this response. Uh, we anticipate increasing volume requests as legal aid mediators, landlords and their attorneys become more familiar with the program and the process associated with accessing these funds. Uh, this initiative actually started back in January, um, although the governor's press release didn't go out until February. Uh, that allowed us to work uh, the processes in advance and forestall any issues. Uh, included in this response, um, the one that was sent to the committee is the one page flyer that fully describes the process and the program. And additional details can be viewed at the department's webpage um, by clicking on the link eviction prevention fund. Um, if you have uh, other questions about that, be happy to uh, to try to answer. And finally, um, can you direct a subcommittee to a Connecticut housing inventory with housing types broken by region? Absolutely. The link was provided in the response. It is at the department's website and active. Um, there's a great deal of housing information available um, by clicking on that link and visiting the department's website. At that point, bless you, Steve. Um, that was the committee's questions that we received in advance.
Thank you, Michael. Um, you got it done um, in under an hour. Um, um, with that being said, we do have um, a couple more questions and we have time to have them all answered. Uh, Representative Nucio, good morning. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Um, I I do have a question. I have sent over some questions for you and I got the headcount piece, which is good. But the piece that was not answered is the answered is the lapsing information. Um, could you please send over uh, not the, not the comptroller's hundred page report? I'm telling everybody who sent that, I'm not looking through a hundred pages. Um, if you could please just send over what your lapses were on six thirty. And um, if you have, what those lapses were in, and if you anticipate having any lapses for the um, this current fiscal year, I would appreciate that.
Uh, certainly, uh, uh, Reb Nucio, and we have that information already prepared. Um, we weren't told to send that to you. We can send that to you immediately following um, the session. And no, I would never send you the whole comptroller's report. Um, and we have a very succinct spreadsheet um, that tells you exactly what we lapsed at the end of last year. Um, currently, we are not projecting any lapse in the current fiscal year. Um, the exception to that being the housing and homeless services line item, which is where RAP lies. Um, as I think we've discussed in in the past, there's always a little bit of float that you need for voucher certificates issued uh, until they lease up. Um, but we are making every effort to spend every dime that we possibly can in that line item.
So I guess my question on that would be, you currently have opens, correct? You have thirteen or ten opens?
Uh, that is correct.
So if you have opens, then I would assume you're gonna have a lapse on that for personnel services and salary.
Uh, no, actually, uh, we will not. Um, again, we anticipate hiring just under seven and a half people before the end of June. Those calculations, uh, that is, those costs are already calculated into our personnel line item. Um, we expect to, um, I'll say it this way. Um, we're gonna overspend our general fund line item for personnel, but we'll backcharge our federal programs so that we don't in fact operate in the red. We have the ability to make some adjustments uh, in that way um, to prevent just such a lapse uh, on the general fund personnel side. And with the aggressive nature of our hiring um, over the last year, um, a-again, we do not anticipate lapsing anything uh, in GF and in particular for personnel.
All right. So are you basically saying that um, you you kind of settle with the with the number? So your personnel number is at a hundred percent and you, um?
We try to get, we try to get as close to fully expenditure on our personnel line item as we can um, within our federal guidelines. So understand our our federal sources do have um, rules around them. Um, and in order, uh, we try to make sure that we are fully federally compliant um, in terms of how we are charging off personnel, but there's more flexibility um, when we get to the end of the year in that regard, so that we can in fact modify some of the the prior charges. Uh, in particular, because of the substantial federal resources and access to federal administrative dollars that we have, we've tried to be more aggressive in terms of our hiring practices uh, and getting folks on board. Um, so again, um, you know, we try to maximize um, the use of our administrative dollars as much as we can.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Reb Nucio. Um, members, anyone else have any questions? Well, Michael, I don't see any other questions. Do you have anything um, before we depart this to add, uh, Mike or anyone from your staff?
I I would defer to our deputy commissioner. Anything you want to add, deputy?
No, sir. I think the time is well spent. We've got a lot of work to do and follow up.
Okay, um, Senator Hartley, before we dismiss, uh, is anything you'd like to add, madam?
I'm 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 all set. Thanks, Representative Gibson.
Okay. Well, um, Steve and Deputy Commissioner McGee, um, thank you for spending time with us today. Um, it was good seeing you both. And um, we will look forward to speaking to you some more with um, some more um, questions and your and your answers. So thank you for the time you've given us. And uh, no offense to anyone else, but um, Deputy Commissioner, Representative McGee, it was good seeing you, sir.
Likewise, I miss you guys, but I don't want to come back.
You may see you, Brandon.
Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. Thank you, Michael, and thank you for everyone else. Really appreciate the time you spent with us. Um, Susan, any departing words? Um, when's our next meeting?
The Office of Consumer Council is here. I'm Senator Councilwoman of the Security. He is accompanied by Brooke Parker. Where I don't see the folks from.
Good, good morning, Susan and Chair Gibson. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can you not hear me? I have my.
There we go. I was having trouble hearing you, but now I can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, should we wait another two for the folks from deep to come on with you?
Um, we don't, that's okay. I guess depending on the questions, you know, we are, because we are um APU to deep, they handle some of the, you know, our finances, but I'll I'll do my best to answer the questions and uh, perhaps if they're not on by the time there's something too witty for me to refer back to, I'll I'll uh, follow up with you. That's, that sounds good.
That's great.
Thank you. Um, good morning, still morning. I had to check my my clock here. Um, thank you to the committee for um, having me back to answer questions. Um, we did provide uh, some follow up information uh, to Representative Nucio's requests, as well as Senator Hartley's requests uh, for an current organizational chart. I hope you've received uh, those uh, written documents and I'm happy to answer questions particularly about uh, the additional uh, staff uh, position that we have requested in this budget, which is a Director of Utility Oversight and Regulatory Reform. Uh, I know that uh, many of you share um, my uh urgent desire to uh, continue to help Connecticut consumers uh, with uh, safe, reliable and affordable uh, electricity, gas, water and telecommunications services. Um, and I do uh, believe this position will will better enable us to focus on a lot of the work that you've, uh, many of you have heard is happening before the Energy and Technology Committee regarding a Take Back the Grid Act Two uh, proposal uh, as well as continuing to ensure implementation of uh, the good work you all did in the Take Back the Grid Act One. Um, so um, why don't I uh, pause there and see if you have specific questions with respect to our request or our budget staffing, any other issues on your mind?
Thank you, Claire. I I think it'd be um, helpful if you just go through um, the questions that were given to you and then we can um, ask as uh, as you present.
Sure, uh, would those be the questions from Representative Nucio?
Uh, sure, sure. Yes, you can start doing, yes.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So um, just to give you a little background, the Office of Consumer Council is a small and mighty independent uh, state agency. Um, we have currently have nineteen funded positions. I've requested one additional position. Just to give you some benchmarking, um, PURA, the Public Utility Regulatory Authority, that we do a large amount of our work before, though that's, our work is not limited to that work. We also do work uh before deep, when they have agency proceedings, we have a regional um, important regional role. We are Connecticut's sole voting member of NEEPool, the New England Power Pool, so we do a lot of advocacy for consumers at the regional level and also at the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, um, as well as in state courts. Uh, we handle our own appeals. We are not represented by the Attorney General's Office, um, because we directly represent consumers. Um, so we have an added volume of of appellate work too. So that's sort of the broad landscape and just to give you a sense. So PURA has a authorized uh count of eighty staff, uh, deep's Energy Bureau has, um, I think about twenty, um, uh, twenty, uh, no, I'm sorry, thirty. Um, so we definitely are lean uh, in our staffing, but we have a lot of impact in the areas that we work on. We save uh, customers millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars a year, depending on whether there are big rate cases like there are going right now. Um, so every, you know, every position that is is funded is is well worth it. Um, we do currently, just to keep moving through the questions, we have um, three vacancies right now. Uh, one is due to a research analyst who became a lawyer, uh, literally just left us two weeks ago, so we are filling that as quickly as possible. Um, we have a visual media designer, social media um position that um, I am moving forward to hire. Uh, it um, we were able in the last budget cycle to bring on uh, a communications and legislative program manager, Brooke Parker, who's on on the call with me, uh, who uh, joined us just in December, so I uh, strategically waited uh, for to fill her position so that she could help hire the person who would be supporting our communications work. So we are very excited to do that. Uh, and we did actually just um, fill our Open Economist position uh, this week as well. Uh, so we're really excited to um have uh, full staff very soon and the opportunity to continue to expand, given the the large uh, range of work we do. Um, and feel free to stop me. I'll just keep going through the questions, but if you have questions, uh, I'll keep, I'll look up occasionally to make sure I'm not uh, depriving anyone of the ability to 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 flag me over here. Um, so in terms of.
If, yeah, if you can just continue to go through and if there's questions arise, members will raise their hand and I'll monitor that. So, yes, please continue.
Okay, great. Thank you, Representative Gibson. So if there is a positive change in headcount, please explain why these positions are needed. So the the change is specifically focused on a leadership position I'm uh, seeking in the electric utility space. We have a lot of new work given uh, given the direction from the Take Back the Grid Act to transition to a performance based regulatory structure, which is really an exciting opportunity. Um, we're currently before PURA uh, developing the specific mechanisms um, that will transition us, but I, we really need some leadership within the office to focus on that, the related um um, Equitable Modern Grid Initiative that uh, PURA has led uh, as well as, you know, helping to provide some more um, strategic proactive work around um, rate cases, uh, because we are anticipating uh, an influx of rate cases over the next few years. Uh, many of the companies, um, both on the water, electric and gas side had have uh, not had rate cases uh, for several years. We just finished um, Aquarian Water case this morning. Uh, we're in the middle of UI. We anticipate Eversource will be coming in um in the next year or so, and as as well, the gas companies are up uh, probably, actually, we'll probably get some of the gas companies in uh, within the next six months is my, is my guesstimate. Um, so while um, the additional request is legislative, uh, it's driven by legislation that creates additional responsibilities for us. It is also, you know, just uh, because we are lean and can, you know, can benefit from additional leadership um, here. You know, we have to make strategic decisions, um, given our our staffing size about you know, what we cover. We try to cover almost everything that PURA does, um, but there are, you know, hundreds of filings uh, in each docket. There's currently around three hundred dockets, uh, plus there's the regular state litigation work we're doing. Um, we have a increase in appellate litigation, um, which from my perspective is a is a good thing. Uh, the companies are appealing a lot of the decisions coming out of PURA because PURA has taken a very active um uh, oversight role, um, but but that creates additional work for us because we participate um, in all of the appellate litigation. Um, so it's a combination of the Take Back the Grid Act and then a a bunch of uh, statutes that have been passed and are being implemented through PURA's uh, Equitable Modern Grid Initiative. And I listed a few in my written responses. Um, there were a few acts, um, you know, ranging from uh, Public Act twenty two fourteen, the Clean Energy Tariff Programs, Public Act twenty one one sixty two, uh, an act concerning solicitation of new fuel cell electricity generation, Public Act twenty two fifty five, an act concerning energy storage systems and electric distribution reliability, Public Act twenty two dash twenty, an act concerning modifications to gas pipeline processes. So all of the legislation then uh, in practice results in PURA opening dockets to figure out how are we going to implement this? And that's where we come in. We participate on behalf of consumers um, to try to advocate for good um, good uh, results. Um, and that's why those um, pieces of legislation create additional work. Um, I did go through the vacant positions uh, information. Um, and then I think I I previewed um, the hiring process for our three vacancies. Um, the economists will be starting um, April tenth um, and or hoping to get the, you know, the utilities examiner and visual and uh, social media um, positions filled, you know, by the summer is my is my goal. Um, so just moving through the questions, um, there were some questions about lapses. Um, were there any lapses um, on accounts at the end of the fiscal year? Um, there were. We had uh, about three hundred thousand dollars of PS, uh, personal service laps. That's due to some of some of these vacancies and and we have had um, other transitions within um, within the last year and it took, I I moved as quickly as I could after the the budget um, was was uh, finalized and passed last session, um, but we did bring on um, as I mentioned, Brooke, our uh, the Communications and Legislative Coordinator, um, as well as our our Legal Director. Um, so I think those lapses reflect the the lag between um, uh, being authorized and filling those positions. Uh, and then we do have a a small lapse on other OE, other expenses. Um, our office does traditionally engage in a fair number of conferences, um, Our office does traditionally engage in a fair number of conferences and educational opportunities. We are an active member of our National Association for State Utility Consumer Advocates that convenes twice a year. To really bring together valuable education and exchange of what other consumer advocates are doing across the country. Those were on hold for, or, or occurring remotely until last year, we finally came back in person. But I think the travel is sort of slowly ramping back up and that is reflected in, in the OE. So. Sorry, does someone have a question?
No, I'm just looking at the summary sheet. It shows OE is flat.
Okay. You know what? When I, I think I was just looking at the lapses in twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. I apologize. You are right. I was looking at the wrong year when I glanced down. And. So thank you for that clarification. The other, just the last question I didn't get to is whether we receive ARPA funding. We do not receive ARPA funding. You know, our funding comes through the PUC Fund, the Public Utilities. Commission and Consumer Council Fund. These are all rate, rate payer funded, funded positions. That go through the regulatory mechanism. And while we don't receive ARPA funding, we do participate in a lot of the. Activity, we're, we're working to, to ensure that ARPA funds are leveraged. And other federal funds such as the IIJA, the Infrastructure Investment and JOBS Act funding. There are a lot of federal programs that are important to our work and what I really view as offsetting. Costs for Connecticut consumers, the more federal funds we receive. The, you know, the lower the Connecticut specific investment will be. So we are engaged at. At DEEP and in PURA proceedings to make sure that our utilities are applying for any of the optional funds that they can. And will continue to focus on those areas until all, all of the funds are spent. We're also work, you know, our offices, our broadband office works closely. With DEEP's new, new broadband office to encourage. The development of the RFP and the other processes for getting the broadband money out as quickly as possible. So we're engaged in that, but we don't directly receive ARPA funding. So engaged in the implementation and, you know, provide insights. We don't manage any grant funding coming from ARPA directly, but we try to throw our two cents in as to how, how it should be spent to the extent possible. So just to wrap up on the general questions here, there are, is there anything you would change about the budget? Anything you would add? Anything you would remove? So, you know, this, I believe I indicated in my initial. Subcommittee meeting that this was the one position we requested through the governor's budget. And I'm grateful to have had, had it added as a request. I do think the Director of Utility Oversight will pay for itself in terms of additional savings. And regulatory reform mechanisms that are identified through that leadership. And it will certainly benefit consumers. You know, as I mentioned at, at the beginning, you know, we're certainly. Always playing a game of what we call regulatory whack a mole. You know, had I. Am I kicking myself now for not asking for more stuff? Sure, yes. You know, the, the Director of Utility Regulatory. Oversight will have two positions under it. I'll be pulling from, you know, our current structure. And I, I think as a practical matter, there will be, you know, our, both our attorneys and our technical staff. Which are the economists and utilities examiners do a little bit of everything. Because we have electric, gas, water, telecom. I've been trying to develop a little more areas of specialty as we hire new staff. Because I, I think that provides some efficiencies and it's helpful to know, you know, that. Ex-staffer is the sort of water expert or the telecom expert and is responsible for keeping up with the, the day to day developments in these industries. Because they're all so, so quickly changing. So because we're a small team, it's pretty organic, like our, you know, the way our org chart reads. There's a lot of, you know, in terms of we have the technical staff and the legal staff and, and we, we work together. But I do view this Director of Utility Oversight as kind of helping to merge the legal analysis and the technical analysis. On the electric utility and regulated services side. To, you know, help facilitate this transition to performance based regulation. And the, ensure that, you know, the clean energy transition occurs in the most cost effective and beneficial way to consumers. So I'm very excited about it and I'll stop there and see if there are any additional questions.
Thank you. Members, are there any questions? Seeing none. I think you're doing a, a good job. There's no questions right now.
Okay, thank you. Well, I know you all have busy packed days, so happy to give you ten minutes back.
Well, members, I, I don't, again, I don't see any, any hands, any questions. Is there anything else you would like to share with us?
I think I, I covered it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time and your presentation. It was wonderful.
Thank you so much. Great to see you and thank you all for all the, the hard work you're doing. I know, but the budget process is laborious and, and all of these different meetings are, are helpful, both for us on the agency side. And I know important to the work you do in creating a budget. So appreciate your willingness to bring, bring me in to hear a little more about our work and our requests.
Thank you so much.
Hey, take care. Thank you.
Have a great day. Okay. Hi, Susan.
Hi there.
Hi. So what's next?
I think you're done.
Okay. So thank you. So when is our next meeting?
You have, hold on, let me come up. Your decision making meeting will be next Thursday, March twenty third at two o'clock.
Next Thursday, two o'clock. Thank you so much.
Zoom, are we doing all of our decision making via Zoom? Are we going to do any?
It is all via Zoom. Can't find enough rooms around here in order to have in-person meetings sadly.
But you're magic. Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, well, no one else has any questions and I think we're set for today at least.
Okay, so it's Thursday, I'm sorry, Thursday at two, you said? Next Thursday, next Thursday at two. Okay, and that's a Zoom.
Yes, next Thursday, two o'clock.
That's good. I'm good.
Okay, great. In the meantime, members, if you have any questions, please reach out. Thank you, Susan, for your time.
You're welcome.
Susan, and then our, our report to OFA is when?
Well, Madam Chair, I'm not going to discuss that over YouTube Live.
Okay, got it. I'm sorry. Yep.
It's okay.
Pardon me. Yep. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.